Almost. Here we go. I guess we're all set, right? I'd like to call the order. The Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 14, 2014. Madam Clerk, would you lead us in the Pledge of Leagance?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, please. The Reverend Duval Patrick has ordered all flags be lowered to half staff on Monday, July 14, in honor of Lance Corporal Shawn Michael Dugan, 20 years old, United States Marine Corps, Springfield, who died July 2, 2014. Do you want me to make a moment of silence? Thank you. Mr. Administrator, would you go through the mail?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things in the mail first, as we have our official invitations to march in the 300th parade on Saturday, June 6, which will be here just before we know it. And if things keep up, it will also be a sunny, very hot day.
I hope so. If I may, there should be a letter going out to every former selectman also to participate in the 300th parade. Thanks to Jen. Jen has worked on that and has every selectman back to 62.
Wow.
Missing maybe three addresses only. And we'll try to do a little bit more research to find out who's before that, but thanks for your efforts.
Very good. And what I also included in the packet, by way of update, is a set of plans for the intersection at Littleton Common, which MassDOT has provided to us, that we had asked them for some time to see if they could redo the signals at that intersection so that you could have a dedicated left turn lane in all directions. And they have come back to us with a proposal to do that. It just requires a sort of a restriping. What's there now is no loss of space at the common. And the only equipment changes are going to be in the signal head, that they're not changing any poles or anything like that. It could get done in the next two to three months. We're still working with MassDOT on, frankly, who's going to pay for the new opt-- what's the chief, the--
The Opticon device that turns the lights, lets the emergency vehicles turn the lights all to red so we can get through without getting T-bone.
Do we-- do we have a project number for this yet? And if not, I didn't see it anywhere.
Not that I've seen, no. It's just a preliminary plan.
Right. Prior to anything, because I'd like to see if we can get those poles changed to kind of dress up the common. And I may have some contact somewhere that I can shake a tree.
Yeah, the folks that at the level we're dealing with are doing it for the, you know, lowest cost or whatever.
Right.
And I think it would probably be someone above their pay grade.
Yeah. If we could just stay on top of, or when you communicate back, ask for a project number and follow that up.
Sure.
It would be appreciated.
We will do that.
And maybe we can hit up the light department to change the light poles down there too to something more decorative than those 1950-ish style.
Maybe we can get something for them on eBay if they're historic.
They make them now. They make them now.
So we will, so we'll follow up on that. And we are getting cost estimates for MassDOT on the Opticon system. They don't, it may be cheaper to be purchased through us than them, but we're going to hope that they pay for it.
And regards to that, Sam Park is paying for the ones coming up $4.95 and those improvements. So that'll be, there'll be two lights in town that don't have them, the common and then--
Everything else has them.
Even the Powell's Road will have them?
Yep, Powell Road already has them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so does King Street and Air Road. So the only light that doesn't have it currently is one of the commons.
The one you go through all the time.
Yeah.
Interesting. I saw the one down by Sunoco, I didn't see the Powell.
So that was it, Mr. Chairman, by way of updates this year.
Thank you. Now, I want to open it to public input. Anybody? State your name and address.
Sure. Michael Zeltin, 11 Loeann Street. Elections have consequences. I'm sure you've all heard this before. However, in this particular instance or a particular period of time, it seems to me that Littleton stands right at the brink of incredible opportunity and challenge, and I'm hoping it can respond. Now, in my brief time here, I've heard a great deal of discussion about planning boards, master plan boards, the hope that such boards will come up with ideas and concepts that will subsequently give us to the future. However, I would suggest another point of view. It's this board, this selectman, that you are directly elected by all the people. This is not a precinct by precinct election. You've been elected townwide. I'm looking forward to the leadership that this group can bring in coming up with three or four core ideas, a clear statement of where the town should go, then turn to the committees, then turn to the planners to get the estimates, to get the advice, to mold and shape your concepts. But please exert leadership. Don't ask the committees, don't ask the planning board, don't ask the master plan group to come up with the concept. You've been elected to provide the leadership. In every instance, I've been able to find, in towns that have successfully pulled off development, among the major ingredients is the leadership that the town-elected officials bring. Not administrators, not the paid professionals who support, but the folks who get elected. You have the trust. You certainly have the knowledge. I don't think any of you have lived here less than three years. I mean, you've been here for years. If you haven't, your families have been here. So you know the town. Who could know it better? So the pulses, you know the pulse. You are the pulse. So I'm looking forward to that leadership. And not to repeat what goes on in every other instance, where you depend on boards and others to do your thinking for you. Please lead. And I'm sure the town will reject the details of whatever you come up with. However, what's important is the core vision, the core idea has got to be coming from you. So what I'm looking forward to is five, at the most, five clear statements of where we're going. And subsequently, after you've had your huddles and your meetings among yourselves, pick the best, go out. You've got interested citizenry, you've got the committees that can help you estimate and shape your ideas. So I'm looking forward to the next couple of months with a lot of action along those lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go to member input. I want to certainly welcome our newest member, Mr. Paul Vella.
Thank you.
Congratulations in the election.
Thank you.
And I'll let you start with public input and anything you might have.
Just happy to be here, as they say. So thank you.
Jim? All right. I'd also like to thank Mr. Vella to throw his hat in for the position of selectman. I think he's proven himself as a school committee member and a member of the armed forces and is a great volunteer for this town. So congratulations and with an overwhelming win. And I think, as Mike was talking, we've seen the switch in the townspeople and the direction the town wants to go. And I think that the silent majority, when energized, speaks loud and clear. And I think in the results of the last two elections--
And I think in the results of the last two elections show that. So I too look forward to, you know, developing a, some type of vision for the town that we all as a board can agree on, and hopefully the town will agree with us and then disseminate it out to other committees that will look for their input. So it was a great, great election, and congratulations, Paul.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome and congratulations, Paul. I totally agree. It's great to have you. We have a complete team now, so we can roll for season and get started. Picnic this Saturday, awesome, beautiful weather, a little hot, but a great turnout, really well done. So thanks, everyone, that helped with that. And then I agree on the goal setting. So we have two things coming up here. We have master plan update. Where'd it go? Hope it's behind Matt. We have master plan update coming up and our goal-setting exercise. So I think those are two vehicles we can use to do that. That's it.
I too want to congratulate the committee, the 300th picnic committee, for an outstanding festivities on Saturday. Two and a half years of work went into that, and I think it played out extremely well. Well-organized, real country-type of day where they had something going on almost every 15 minutes, so it worked out really well. Once again, and a series of celebrations. That was fantastic. We had two in a row. Hopefully, the weather stays the same way for our future events also. Just remind people also that this Thursday is Third Thursday on the common, and we're beginning to make it down to see some of the presentations that are there and the different small companies that will have their different products also. Okay. Anything else? Okay. 3A, the town clerk and we voted, under her request, for a staffing vacancy review to fill one part-time, non-benefited position of election warden as an employee rather than an outside vendor. And it was posted, Diane, you had, you posted, how many applications do you have?
One.
From the incumbent.
That girl, Sandy. Sandy, do you want to come and seat up here and--
Hello, guys.
Hello.
We're getting lonely without a member of your family here.
Sorry to say, Jim is down and out for a while.
Oh, really? No feeling?
He's back.
When was that?
12:30 last night.
That's not good.
We're not good. Not good at all.
We certainly want to thank you for applying for the position. I think we all know that your qualifications and how long you've been doing this type of thing, but I open it to the board for any other discussion.
Just glad to see your face when we go into a vote. So I'm happy that you actually stepped up. So thank you.
I agree.
Paul, anything?
No, just add tireless efforts. We see you every single election, so this is a wonderful appointment.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say, Sandy?
No, I'm just wanting to make sure that the elections run smoothly, keep it a neutral area for people to come in and vote and not feel pressured. So that's my whole goal, welcoming people to come through that door. More voters, the better.
Ready for motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, subsection 12, to approve the town clerk's recommendation to appoint Sandra Clyde of Littleton, Mass, to a part-time, non-benefited position of election warden.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations, Warden.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks very much. Our best to Jim, too.
Give, yeah, give our best to Jim.
Yeah.
Hope he feels better. Give him a big kiss, because he's got my cellphone if he needs anything.
All right, thanks.
3B, appointments. Chief, would you like to take the stage?
As you know, the control center was down one individual. You can say, I guess we'll stop. The control center was down one individual. Since we met last and you gave me the staffing vacancy review, we lost another one to a resignation when it, to a private industry in the dispatch function. So I guess we're doing a quick staffing vacancy review, and through the last process, we were able to glean two individuals, Nicole Deflemic and Brian Colwell. Brian's been on the fire department about two and a half years. Nicole is a lifelong Littleton resident through our, come up through our system. So, well, we were really looking forward to longevity out of these two individuals. They're both green, need a lot of training and things like that, but we found our best longevity with people that we train and are able to retain better that way than some of our people that come in from the outside. We did get about 40 resumes for the position, and when all was said and done, staying with our own local individuals was the best way to go. So with that, I give you Nicole and Brian for your, I guess your interrogation, as it will.
We'll start with Nicole, if that's okay with the board.
I don't mind.
I'll just stop quickly. Nicole, a quick question. Be comfortable. For my, I just want to know, why is this position important to you? Why do you want to fill it?
Growing up, I grew up around the emergency services with my dad. And living in this town for as long as I have, I just, when this opportunity came about, I wanted to be able to give back to my community that has given so much to me. I just always found it like an interesting job. Yeah.
How do you handle stress?
I handle stress very well. I work in the restaurant industry right now, so that's very stressful at times. I know how to handle people that come with me with complaints and stuff like that, so I can handle myself very well under stress.
Do you, getting into the public safety field, how do you feel about, you know, some of the tragedies and things that you may encounter? You know, how would you deal with that, with that type of stress?
I mean, I know that comes along with the job, stuff happens. I mean, I guess I've, I'll have to wait and see how, I mean, I think I'm going to handle it pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Melissa?
Do you kind of see yourself going into either this, the communications kind of industry here, or the police department, or is this kind of where you want to go, or--
Yeah, I wanted to get into like the emergency services, whether it be with the police or the EMT stuff, but this will help me--
Get you for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Got you.
Thanks, Melissa. I was going to ask about a career path also in Aston Anson, so thank you.
We'll move on to Brian. My first question again, why do you want this position? Why is it important to you?
It's a full-time job, and serving with multiple fire departments, not just Littleton, but I work for Mass Fire Control. I just settling myself down into town and look forward to continuing and servicing the town of Littleton and members from outside also.
Being a firefighter, I'm sure that you've dealt with stresses in your, that profession. How do you see yourself handling stresses of, you know, calls, multiple calls, and of that nature in a dispatch?
It comes with the job, and there's systems out there that help you if you need to seek assistance, employee action, and various other things. But I've been in very stressful situations, and you just work your way through it.
Very good.
Maybe just a question on kind of familiarity with technology, like, you know, data input and kind of multitasking and that kind of thing. Do you experience or want to get involved in that? I remember reading the job description, there was a lot about that. I forgot to ask the board about that, sorry.
Yes, working for the state, I've mostly paperwork. They haven't gotten the computers yet in the sector that I've been in, but it's mostly paperwork, and then somebody else puts it in the computer.
So maybe another growing opportunity to get trained and learn up on that.
Yep.
Do you see a possible career path and a level of some place to come for yourself?
Yes, it seems busy and popular enough to be able to settle in and maybe move up and become a supervisor at some point, or continue on at the fire department, or maybe even move over on the police side.
We're not holding the fact that he wants to be a firefighter again.
An opportunity for education, isn't that right?
I can say that, because Scott's not here tonight.
Any other question?
Just for the chief, who was on, how did your process go with those interviews?
This process was done by a firefighter that was appointed, obviously, as you know, Nicole is Scott Wazinski's stepdaughter. And so the firefighter that was appointed did not report back to Chief Wazinski, who actually was appointed, or reported back to me. And then three sergeants and patrol staff, all who have had experience on the communications desk, that moved forward, and then one communications officer also. So, and myself.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to amend its vote of March 10th, 2014, and grant the police chief's amended request of the staffing vacancy review policy to fill two full-time, benefiting positions of police dispatch communication officer. And to appoint Nicole Deflemic and Brian Colwell, both of Littleton, to said positions.
Second.
Move in seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carrie's. Congratulations.
Got to work the call. Got to work the call. Watch those cords.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
See if you trickery. If he first wants to do the dispatch, that's a pleasure.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Let's get chief. Three D. Thank you. Attendance is good for all of them. If it's okay with the board, if it's okay with the board, I'll skip over 3C and go to 3D so we can, yeah, work with the school committee right away. You have someone to give us?
Yes, we do. Obviously, we have a literal and figurative vacuum to fill with Mr. Avella's lateral move.
Sounds like--
When I say lateral, I'm being generous. Selectmen, so pursuant to--
Do we have to accept this tonight? Someone play you, Caitlin?
Pursuant to Mass General Law, we have had a meeting to notify the Board of Selectmen of the vacated seat as of July 1st, and we are requesting that we arrange a joint meeting on September 8th, 2014, to mutually appoint a school committee member to complete the remaining term of the vacated seat.
Would you say nine months?
Nine, eight, 2014.
It's a regular one for our--
It's on the schedule.
And that would allow--
Is that September 8?
September 8, yeah. So that would give you a month, more than a month, for applications to come in. We didn't think, yeah, we didn't think August would be a good time to--
You've got a plenty of time, so they don't get stuck on vacation or things like that. The after-school starts.
So it'll be posted right away, though, right?
We'll post it right away, and so it'll be about a six-week period, people can, if I can--
When's the cutoff date for the last application?
If we're going to meet on the 8th, we could do it at the prior Friday.
That's right.
Yeah. The day before the parade. The day before the parade. You guys going to be able to function?
We don't actually meet in the summer, other than--
Oh, exactly. That's what I was trying to get.
The other shoe drops.
And we only meet bi-weekly when we do meet. We don't, we get our work done efficiently.
Oh. Again, do we have to accept this? So glad you guys came.
Actually, pretty efficient.
You're trying to say you're happy to these hands up.
Wish you all good luck.
Good, thank you. I guess somebody needs a motion, though.
Yeah, so--
My buddies.
We got quiet about this, too.
So post it immediately, and then--
Post it immediately and have them do the Friday before that joint meeting day.
All right. I need glasses for this one. It's a long one.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, subsection 11, to receive the notice therunder given by the remaining members of the school committee of the vacancy of said board created by the resignation of Member Paul Avella effective of June 30, 2014, and further to give notice to said remaining members of the Board of Selectmen shall convene a joint meeting with the intent to fill said vacancies through May 2015 Annual Town Election by joint appointment to be made on Monday, September 8th, 2014, at 7:15 PM, and further to invite qualified registered voters of the town of Littleton to apply for said appointment and to be interviewed by said joint meeting.
Give me a second.
Second.
Move in seconded. All those in fight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Look forward to seeing you on--
See you guys.
Well, we'll see you in the parade, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Thanks for doing this tonight, too.
Chuck. See you, guys.
There goes the next pile of crowd.
I'll call back.
You got stuck in a hurry, didn't you? Okay, 3C, two different committees. The Common Sewer Feasibility Study and the Committee to Increase Voter Participation. Both need selectmen to fill those positions.
There's also the Working Group for the fiscal policies. I'd like to add to this list. Previously, Selectmen Champney was on it with me, and I'd like to add that to the list, so, because we're going to be reconvening again, that group is still together.
And also later on, we might add the Master Plan Committee as well, so potentially four.
This would be something for everyone.
Yay.
Starting, including those who aren't here tonight.
I think Alex should go on the increased voter participation. He just resigned from, that's why there's a vacancy.
Can I ask a question as to how we, as a selectman, how we view these committees versus, you know, permanent ad hoc? The fiscal working group that you just brought up would seem to be that it's a perpetual sworn committee group, if you will, if I'm going to work with you, that's not going on paternity, because each year, we're going through fiscal processes and the like. It seems, if not even, you know, the periodicity of meeting can be determined by the working group, but certainly haven't established and ongoing, as it is now, ready to schedule more meetings as we get into the budget season, get any kind of fiscal or policy rearrangement. So at least in my view of the world, is they're a permanent sort of group. The ad hoc, you know, I don't know that, and if I could miss it, I apologize, that I've ever seen a sunset clause in any of our committees that we establish that way. And, you know, this is government. Sometimes things go on forever just because they go on forever. And I would offer, we should at least consider that in ad hoc committees, that we put sunset clauses into them. And as time goes by and it turns out, oh, there's still more work to be done as that deadline's approaching, we extend the deadline. And that way, something in government actually comes to an end, because all too often, many things in government never come to an end. So I gave you my thoughts on the fiscal working group. So then when it comes to the feasibility study for the sewer, or sewer feasibility study, and then also the voter participation study committees, I guess I'm asking, the view of the board is, have they done their job, as originally laid out in their charter?
If I can. I love the point you just made, because we just went through a list not too long ago of committees that have been on the books for years and years. The Town Government Study Committee was finally taken up in the crematory. So you're right, we probably should have a more direct cutoff date, but I appreciate what you said.
Yeah, you know, as you were talking, I was thinking about the Page-A-Throw Committee that was, you know, taken off that list. But, you know, turn that into a recycle, well, we have a sustainability committee now, so that's all that's--
Yeah, yeah. There was a list of committees that the board voted not to disband, there were three that you voted to disband, there was another set that you voted to schedule a future agenda item on what their prognosis is. We didn't include these committees in that motion for future review, but if you thought that was a more appropriate next step, you could--
You know, I'd like to hear back from the study of Committee for the Voter Participation-- You know, I'd like to hear back from the study of committee for the voter participation. I mean, you know, I think the recommendations we implemented, is Diane still here? The recommendations we implemented, you know, doing the mailings and getting rid of the little card and all that stuff worked well.
Ordering the articles.
Doing order of the articles, I mean, you know, we haven't heard back from them, but that could be a committee we could disband, too, you know? But I'd like to hear from maybe the chair of that committee to find out whether or not they think that there's anything more that needs to be done.
We can schedule that for the future.
Yep, that may be the best next step, yeah. In both cases, that those vacancies of board representatives was brought to our attention for action, but it could just as easily be the next step.
Right, right.
You know, talk to each of the study committees before you decide whether you want to continue on.
Right. And I think the sewer feasibility study committee, we've heard from Megan, the chair, that, you know, she feels as if, in our previous meetings, that, you know, it's time to go to the next level, you know? So the study, the feasibility study has been complete, so it's maybe a change for a new committee or a new design of an existing committee to become Sewer Education Committee or, you know, something to that effect. But, again, I think we should bring that group back in and ask, you know, what is your, what is your goal, what is your vision for the future of this committee, or do we roll into another committee?
I would offer, it almost becomes incumbent upon ad hoc committees to offer a briefing of persuasion, if you will, that persuade the Board of Selectmen that they should continue. They merely come in and say, I think I should continue. I would find wholly inadequate. There should be some very good substantive reasons that that committee should remain in existence, and it persuades this board to say, yes, you're absolutely right, you know, and we vote that you go that way. Absent that, I would say, again, my thoughts on, you know, limiting the size of government to what's appropriate and what's needed, not anything that's the purpose.
You definitely get out of control with committees, that's for sure.
So if I may continue in that vein, and I think we may already be leaning that way, the sewer feasibility study and the voter participation study has asked those chairmen to come in and offer, as I said, that briefing and persuasion, and you had mentioned others that you have on the list, and perhaps it's one of the evenings where you have, we have 30, 40 minutes, whatever you think it takes, to run through them.
Did we schedule that?
You didn't schedule a time, no. You scheduled that we would do it at a future meeting, but not for the sewer or the-
No, voter participation in the sewer?
That's what I'd offer, yes.
The only thing about, I know that the chairman of the, we actually have Megan come in, because I think she's been dying to make a final part under our committee. I think the one thing, she wants to continue, so we should, one, we ask her to come in, and then at that time, we can place one of those on that committee.
Yes.
Yeah, and Bureau of Sport Newtown Road, I just think the voter participation committee or something like that should continue. We really have a very low voter turnout for lots of things, and it would be nice to have higher ones.
Thanks, Herb. But I think as far as the fiscal policy review group, working group, I mean, that is still active. We should absolutely replace Selectmen Champney, I feel, tonight. Later on in the agenda, we have a, some recommendations from the staff in regards to policies, but I don't think this is the form to bring them up. We should bring them before that committee and let it get vetted through that policy committee. We have a standing goal to review policy, procedures, and bylaws, what we can and what we do. I mean, we have been pretty successful in changing, you know, cleaning up some of our bylaws, so I think we should continue on that road, too.
And I know at your reorganization meeting, you doled out quite a few activities for yourselves, and I was-
I was looking at you. You're the new guy on the block, absolutely.
Didn't you get a chance to volunteer?
I saw the smile while you were doing it.
Any chance to volunteer?
Yes, too.
But if you liked, I enjoy doing that.
You okay? Just the one.
Just the one. Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Selectmen Vella to fill the board vacancy on the fiscal policy working group.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the fiscal policy working group. Mr. Vella will be our representative, or one of our representatives, you're the other one, right? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries, and we'll put the other two in.
Do you want to schedule those for future agenda items?
I think we should do that sooner than later, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we should do that whole list at one night, that'd be a very long night, but-
Well, maybe just those two for the first one.
Yeah, the most time critical ones.
Sure. Okay. Now, for A, the Master Plan Steering Committee, I know Keith went before the planning board, just before we get into it, Keith, one thing that I think this board should do ahead of time, I think we should have met and talked about some of this first, because when I was at that meeting, I was at the planning board meeting for a private matter and stayed for this, and at times, I was actually nervous that the planning board was gonna ask me questions, because we hadn't gone over into this as a board.
No, I had arranged with you and Mark Montanari as the chairs, that I would visit them first on the 12th, and then come and report to the select, or whatever last Thursday was, and then report to the selectmen on the 14th. So that was the agreed-upon procedure, and so.
I guess, I agree with that, but I think when we start talking about how many people are gonna be in the committee from each type of thing, when our board hasn't talked about that yet, and that was being set up, I guess, I was caught off guard on that aspect of it. I don't know, the board and this thing.
Yeah, I felt the same way, not being, not being involved, and then reading, you know, it looks like a monster committee.
Yeah, we want to keep it as small as we can, on the idea of maybe no more than 11.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the more people that gets added, I think, can be overburdening, and, you know, it just, as Mr. Vella pointed, you know, the tail chasing the dog sometimes when you get a huge committee like that, so you gotta be very careful.
I think back, even when the board formed the town government study committee, I think, Mr. Glave, you were part of that.
I wasn't on it, but I established it.
You established it, and I think the charge you gave us way back then was extremely long and thoughtful, and you gave us eight members. At first, we thought it was difficult to work with eight, but as it turned out, those eight all had different responsibilities, and we did go out to every single board and committee possible, went to other towns to do things, but we kept it at eight, and it seemed a lot more manageable. And that's why, we need, this has to be done, there's no doubt about it, this is just the first step, but I think maybe fine-tuning who the representative is actually gonna be, and how we go about, do we need two from the selectmen, do we need two from the planning board, do we go one?
And I guess the other thing is, is before we make even those decisions, I think it was during public input, you know, what is this board's vision of this committee? You know, we haven't talked about the vision of this committee. What are we tasking this committee as the Board of Selectmen? What are we looking for? And how are we gonna expect some meaningful results of this process? So, before even making any type of recommendations, I think the board, when we have a full board, should at least talk about, you know, what's our vision? What is our vision of the master plan? What do we expect to look like? And what is the process gonna look like? Is it, you know, the bidding process, we're gonna bring in a private company to come in to help us through the minutia of the documents, so to speak, but what is that process gonna look like? How long are we gonna want to bid? Who's gonna develop the RFP? Who's gonna actually oversee the RFP? Are there gonna be any recommendations from the planning board that are gonna be incorporated? Recommendations from this board to be recommended, to be part of that RFP? So I think if we had, if we had that discussion earlier, I think that would have been helpful for Keith to even go in front of the-
We can still have those to sit. It's never too late.
Right, right. Absolutely, that's what-
We haven't started yet.
Right, right.
The planning board's on board, intended there, to proceed this way, but it senses here at this table to progress also on it, and it offered, it's not a 20-minute discussion, because you've brought up many things, and some of those details will be worked out by the steering committee itself, but certainly as far as determining vision of the master plan, somewhat the structure, and we start talking about size, and some of those things, we've got this tremendous amount of research on the size of candidates, boards, and the like, and sometimes it gets, you know, this feels good, you know, it gets, sometimes it gets to that level, but I think we could probably do something better than that. And not to even begin discussing numbers, anything specific now, but what I'm offering there, I know it's actually worth, guys, gals, but perhaps we schedule an hour, you know, whether it's part of a regular meeting, or we just carve out a day or an evening for an hour, 90 minutes, you know, structure it, have a very good agenda to go through it, rely on some of the research and the successes of other towns, and then I would offer, if we haven't done it yet, that we certainly reread the previous 2002 plan, find out what our point of departure is, at least we know where we're at, and make sure we've got a good understanding, too, of where we are in the town, and we all think we do, but maybe when we start talking about some things, we'll discover issues that we didn't even know existed.
We also have goals coming up.
Yeah, I mean, that's frankly how, and the question came up, how does this board say what's important to you, is when you annually adopt goals, which you do every year, and which we're, we delayed now until after the election, but we need to, sooner we move on that, then the sooner we'll have your direction.
You know, and as Paul stated, maybe a, maybe a separate meeting for goals in the first half, and master plan in the second half, and part of the master plan, I'd like to say have a joint meeting with the planning board, so we can have our visions come as one and get it out to the committee.
I'd say first, the selectmen discuss it. It gets that overarching, town-wide view, if you will, and not that the planning board doesn't have that, and we all know statutorily, you know, where we are basically, the Board of Selectmen, should be the planning board on this whole process, but it would seem that the overarching direction comes from the selectmen, working with all the constituent boards, bringing about, and then very closely with the planning board, for obvious reasons.
So, as opposed to being on the school committee and not meeting that often, summertime, you're proposing more meetings for us. Working.
And actually, it is what it suggests, too. One thought, too, is even before that happens, get a meeting in the mind with the planning board, but, you know, whoever, and maybe we do appoint someone this evening, at least, you know, in the interim, you know, one of us begins a dialogue with the planning board chairman, perhaps, at the very least, so it's not a quorum, quorum sort of thing, but at least some thoughts, you know, going back and forth at that level, and then report back, when we are all together.
Did he just volunteer?
For our second committee.
This is great.
The day job only goes on during the day, so it's okay.
We all have our committees and-
But what's the thought of the board? Goals first, and obviously, I would say have a separate meeting, because we can't include it into a, another thing I would like to talk about, too, not to change it, but I'm talking about the length of meetings. I would love to start early, I'd love to start at 6:30 if it's possible, because I keep on, I keep on thinking, what happens is that we get into positions, and we don't want to be making choices for the town that are extremely important, and it's 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, so, but that's, we can talk about that later, but-
I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I think, you know, we'd have to wait for Alex to get back and make that decision as a full board, but I'm okay with it.
Staff? So you want to set something up with goals first?
Yeah.
I, goals, then master plan, if we can't do it all in one meeting, do two separates. You know, I don't know why we can't set it 90 minutes each.
Yeah.
Do the goals first, and then roll right into the master plan.
Our minds will be on that track, that's, you know, it'll be fresh and-
Plus, I think if we keep our goals, the things that could be accomplished in that year, without getting, I don't want to say sidetracked, but a lot of minor things that we can take care of at regular meetings, but set what the goals are for the board, you know, everyone has five or six strong things that they, and take a look at the list, I think they, it's actually in this packet.
Yeah, you know, in previous years, the list is just, you know, insurmountable, let's face it. It's just, there's just too much there to, that we all know we can't do. So let's, you know, I, you know, we've done it in previous years where we have our goals for the year, and then we have our long-term goals, and I'd like to keep that up.
Yeah, goals, objectives, and milestones, and I would offer a lot of things that on the current list are milestones towards a goal.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And just structure them that way.
Yep. Okay.
So what dates do we want to try?
I don't have my phone with me.
Who knows, it's still July.
Still July.
We're, we don't have anything next Monday, 21st.
Because the goals, at least the goals.
Yeah, well, that's why we schedule the goals first, and we can make a determination after that if we want to roll into the master plan. Well, we do that to agenda.
I think you could, you could do the goals, for sure, next Monday night. I think we'd probably need to have some more structure for discussion on the master plan than maybe we could put together between now and like Friday for the agenda packet. One option for doing that, but, by the way, because I've asked what support MAPC can provide to a community that's updating a master plan, even if they don't hire MAPC as a consultant, can you send us someone to, you know, structure? The question is, how do you do the RFP? Well, you know, we don't, you know, we do have, well, it would have to be us, the staff, putting it together unless we have tasked someone else to do it, because the possibility that we could bring in a planner from MAPC to shepherd the process for us, even if we're hiring a private consultant, that I've been-
Boilerplate of some sort.
Right, to have someone come in who's done the process before and walk us through all those things, that, all the sorts of issues you were talking about of approaching a master plan update. If we, if we had a, you know, if we had a planning director, that type position, that would be the person who, in-house, who would, who would do it. We get that level of expertise outside usually. I think we need it to guide a discussion.
It might be constructive at first meeting, and if it's MAPC, facilitate, and you provide that outline to begin with, so that we have it, you know, going into it, so we can begin thinking about it before we show up here, and then have somebody, you know, the proverbial timekeeper, you know, keep us moving on track, and then they, that's-
And their staff has worked with us before, and they could send us someone to facilitate that process.
Sure. So, so next Monday, we work on goals and leave it goals alone, and then take up the master plan at another date?
Okay.
Schedule facilitated meeting.
Sure.
We could, I do think that should probably be another special meeting.
Yeah.
Just that.
Then we roll into another meeting the following Monday, right? That's a regular scheduled meeting?
28th, yes.
28th?
Yeah, we have a regular meeting on the 28th.
So, you know, depending on what that agenda shakes out to be, maybe a little time on that agenda for the master plan discussion, or?
It's-
Shaping to be full already?
Possible, it's possible. Depends on, I mean, we're, we're tabling off, we will be tabling and stuff tonight that will, you know, we have the fire chief in two weeks from tonight, I'm assuming, so we'll have, the 28th doesn't look awful, that, like, if, if the board's priority for the meeting time of the 28th is to schedule a good hour, you know, 45 minutes in an hour on the master plan, we will work on that, and other things will have to erode to August.
Yeah, well, let's, we can make those determinations as, as, as time goes, I mean, you know.
I'll make inquiry of MAPC right away, and see if, see if they can come, and I'm sure that we will get through it with greater dispatch with them facilitating.
Yeah, I think, you know, a 90-minute discussion, and you know what? If we don't get through with a 90-minute discussion, we table, and we move to another meeting.
Yeah, that's a great way.
To wrap it up.
And ask, at the very least, any outline they provide us, be provided somewhat earlier than the Friday prior, because certainly, we've all given this some thought, but there's gonna be things I would suspect on that outline that we would not have thought of.
We can get it, in all likelihood, we'll be able to get it out in the next week or so.
I thank you.
And we'll work on that.
So, goals, next week and-
Got homework to do.
Yeah, so if it's goals, then your, your proposed draft goals by Friday?
This Friday.
By this Friday.
AM?
AM, and then I can put them, I can put them out in the agenda packet we issue on Friday.
I apologize, do you say that again, please?
By Friday, yeah.
Yeah, it's 8B.
List of proposed goals.
I'll do that motion if you're welcome.
To me, and I'll put it in the-
Is that actually 8B?
Sort of a jumping off point for the discussion. Sort of a jumping off point for the discussion.
Yep.
Eight B.
And that's the date next Monday, twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
So jumping ahead.
Yeah, eight B.
Eight B. If you want to make a motion.
All right. Move that the board of selectmen vote to reschedule a preliminary goal-setting exercise for fiscal year 2015 to July twenty-one, 2014. With the adoption of the goals, be subject to a public hearing held on Monday, August eleventh, at eight PM.
And that's our first regular meeting in August. And we usually do a two-step, so...
Second.
Move to the second, and all who's in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed, all right.
So why don't we move that the, I'll make a motion for the master plan steering committee, which will be on the... We really don't need a motion for that. That'll just be an agenda item.
We'll schedule it for an agenda item, and we'll bring in, for facilitated discussion with the board as well.
Now, what would you think about moving six up right now, since we have the, we have the building committee here? Is that okay?
Sure.
I'm going to come forward, we just moved you up like three spots to get you in.
A bunch of us here tonight, we all have a little something to say for you.
Oh, boy.
What we, what we did, because we have so many projects going, we divvied them up between the membership, so no one gets burdened with any one particular project. For some reason, I guess, they felt bad for me. I seemed to do a lot for the committee, so the committee members gave me the tennis courts to...
Nice.
Get resurfaced, or repainted, or patched up, or whatever it is. That's my big job. So right now, my report on the tennis courts is that I have been waiting to see where we go with Three Hundred King Street, because the basketball courts at Three Hundred King Street are going to be getting the same surfacing, or painting, or sealing, or stuff that we need to do. And I want to get an idea of who they're getting their costs on in that respect. So I have nothing to report on the tennis courts as of yet.
But that's a great idea, you know, waiting for the two projects, maybe get a better price?
Yeah. Maybe we can do something like that too. The tennis courts, we'll probably be able to get them done before fall, so I didn't feel like I needed to rush right into it.
Sure.
So that's the extent of my topic for the night, for the facilities stuff. I will say that, speaking of Three Hundred King Street, we had a bid opening on that for construction bids last Thursday. And the winning bid, or the low bid, that we're having qualified now was from Onyx Construction. Has done quite a bit of work for the town the last few years. So we feel pretty comfortable with them, but the engineer, Green International, is doing their due diligence on them anyhow. So that came in pretty tight, real tight. We're going to have to look at that one with the park and rec department, because there's no room for error on that. So it would be some tough decisions to make on that one. But it's not the end of the world. We're hoping to still be able to proceed with it. We'll go into discussions with that. And we also had a bid opening on Thursday for the redoing the roof on the cemetery building. And that low bid on that came in at about twenty-one thousand dollars, which is within our budget for both construction and construction supervision from the architect. What really surprised us was how big a difference there is between the low bidder and the second, third, and subsequent bidders. And I think it all has to do with the, the, the way the market is now. Commercial construction is just taken right off, and we didn't get this out soon enough. And there's approximately a fourteen thousand dollar difference between the low bid, the second bid, and the third bid. There's a little more than that. Up to the high bid was about twenty-three or twenty-four thousand more, so... We're counting on the low bid of being qualified by the architect and being suitable to do the project, because we don't have an additional fourteen thousand dollars sticking around to do that. So it might get done this year if, if they don't come through. We're crossing our fingers on that one. I guess that's, that's what I have for now. Joe Calentro is the one working with Steve Mark at the school department on the school department project, so Joe will give you a rundown on that. And following Joe, Carl Bryant will be discussing the council tonight on Agent Kitchen. And then Bill Cole will give us a rundown on the library roof, what we need to do there. And then if I think of something afterwards, I'll... Did Rich probably go to Day Off too? What's that? Did he probably go to Day Off too? So you don't know where he is. He was, he was on some business trips with one of his state businesses on the Board of Building Regulations, is it?
Yeah.
Something like that. And he was on some junket with them like...
In Vegas.
I wasn't going to tell him that.
Well, hey, we're paying for it. Rich and Steve Moore are also working with me on schools. We've got twelve items, and I've had two meetings with Steve Mark. And I had him put together a list, which he considers to be the priority list, but it has not been approved by the school committee yet. So he said, "Don't tell them what the list is until they approve it."
You can tell us. No one's been on here.
We know, it's all the stuff that's in the feasibility study. The only thing that has already been done is they repaired the sidewalk at Shakeaway last year to put in for handicap to get in. So that was done. So there's only eleven left to do. And unless you want to hear the wall, but basically, it's the back parking lot carpeting, hot water heaters, roof over the admin area of the high school, unit ventilators, play structure, concrete curbs, parking pool at the middle school, and curb cut at the Russell Street School. So he's going to present this to the building committee, the school committee, and then come back and give me the priorities. And we're going to work with him, basically, to make sure the bid, the information gets out, the bids come in. And he's, he's going to issue all the POs.
I was wondering if, you know, as Jeff was doing with the, it sounds like some projects, maybe Onyx, you know, be able to jump on the same contract and get the school committee to actually make a decision. That would be great, as far as the prioritizing of the projects.
The biggest one is going to be the roof of the high school.
Yeah.
And that has a potential problem. He told me there's no leaks down there. Now, they fixed all the leaks. However, it looks like I'm doing a roof cut, because it appears that the insulation may be wet, which means it's got to come out of there. So we won't know until we do the roof cut.
I could add to be sure on this. The facilities working group has already worked through this, presented them, and this is what Methan Town Meeting wore.
Yeah.
So these values are already approved, as the case now, the school committee shifting around within a budget that's already determined their priorities.
I should mention, the unit ventilators, he's probably going to wait a year. The reason is, he gets a better deal when he does four rather than two. He gets the fourth one almost free. They're going to go them all. The committee recommended all of them.
I thought it was four.
Yeah. There was, I don't think so. It's only, it hasn't, there's only four left. No, he's going to go, only do four.
I thought we said go all of them once, get them done. That working committee. That was the other one that recommended, you said, remember?
I'll look it up.
Please, yeah, thanks. If we misunderstood, or if I misunderstood, that's my bad, but I thought we said get them done.
Yeah.
Because of that economy scale.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Because we've, you guys have been working on that for months, years.
Years.
Well, yeah, it was a long process, because we were doing them piecemeal, so it was...
We've been doing three, three...
I think there was six left, if I remember correctly on that list. Six. Yeah, I thought there was six, so...
I'll check it.
Yeah, yeah.
On the COA kitchen, the RFQ went out reasonably for the design completion and development contract documents. And in response to the RFQ, we had a walkthrough Thursday, which amounted to standing under the kitchen doing three sixty, but we had the walkthrough, and two, two companies were present for that. And quotes are due Friday at ten, and we'll go from there.
We'll just, we'll see what those quotes, and we'll come back at.
And that's a, that was the re, the whole redo of the whole kitchen, right? That's, that's that, no?
Just the kitchen itself?
Yeah, scaled back from anything outside the...
Oh, yeah, but it's the kitchen area, is what I was saying.
Kitchen area, it's not the... Not the dining, yeah.
No, no, but that's what, that was the...
That's what I meant, yeah.
The entire... The entire cooking area, kitchen. Yeah.
I was in shock there, I thought...
I thought that's what we said, said too, right?
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
The library roof, when the roof was done on this building in two thousand and seven, I think? Gale Associates was the architect that was involved in it. And they did some investigatory work on the library roof at the time. So I wanted to go with them. And because the total contract price was going to be less than a hundred thousand, based on the square footage price that they gave me, I was able to do that. So I didn't have to go out to bid for the architect. And an RFP, they responded to the RFP with a contract. Has it come back from town council?
No. I think it's due this week.
Okay.
It's coming back this week, so...
So their proposal is being reviewed by town council right now. And when it comes back, I initially told the architect that I would like to have seen it go out to bid by mid-July, but that's probably going to be closer to the end of July. The cost is a little bit more per square foot than this roof was at the time, because if anybody recalls, part of the library roof blew off last year, the year before. And it was discovered that the wooden blocking around the perimeter of the roof was rotten. And they seem to think that probably the rest of it is in the same shape. So because of the increase in the detail work, the price went up. Because the basic roof itself, per square foot, is not that big a deal. So it looks like it's going to happen, you know, it should go out to bid, bid before the end of July, I hope. And it should come in around eighty-five thousand.
Keith, is that the same item on here that's town office building for a hundred and forty-three thousand different?
We're going to have to ask Keith. What's... Town office building for a hundred and forty-three thousand, that must include the air handlers, the AC units?
Correct.
That's what that means?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Who's handling that project, have you?
Good.
You got it?
They're in my office.
One other thing I thought of that I should bring to your attention is that we've all heard that the library trustees have received notification, they'll be getting funding for feasibility study, they get grant money. And I talked to Mr. Robertson, who's the director of the library. And they are pretty excited about getting going on this. And they're coming to our building committee meeting this Wednesday night, so that we can discuss the, discuss the process to go through to get a feasibility study going. They have certain guidelines that they need to meet with the Mass Library Commission. And putting this committee together, working with our committee, is one of the steps they have to take. Then we move into getting a consultant, that's the next step that they require. And then the consultant will work with the library trustees, figuring out what their needs are. Space-wise, parking, everything, everything that they feel that they need. The consultant works with them and comes up with a basic plan. Then it'll work into hiring an own's project manager, and then from there, hiring the architect. But it was, it was a good conversation that we had together to get an idea where we're headed. And again, Wednesday night, we'll meet officially with them and get going from there. That's all I have to offer you, gentlemen. Anyone else, Bill?
I just wanted to add one thing in regard to the hundred and forty-three thousand. I'm not going to do anything about the rooftop units until we find out exactly how much the roof repair is going to cost. Because all the units, and I think it's seventeen total, or twelve, I can't remember. But anyway, they're all at the same age. They're all dated, manufacturer date was nineteen ninety, or around there. So they're all reaching the end of their life expectancy. So once the roof is determined how much that's going to cost, then I can figure out what's left and whether or not we can replace three, or two, or four. So that's why I didn't bring that up. I guess that's it?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, good enough, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
And, you know, I know I've said this in the past, but to have the other department heads with their capital, I know it's new fiscal year just starting right now, but in the future, to have the department heads come in and give us an update on their capital equipment that was approved in town meeting would be great, too.
We were tentatively scheduling that for August.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah, yeah. That's a great update.
Hey, going back to four B, finance committee member residency status.
Is Chris here?
No, Chris said he couldn't make it. In the letter he wrote, he said he couldn't be here because of business reasons.
We had several inquiries about his residency status, and so scheduled the matter for, for discussion with him. And also invited him to give us a written statement if he could help us understand what his status is. So he did forward us the, the written statement that is in the, in the packet. The broader picture, perhaps, is that while concern has been expressed that if he's no longer, if he or anyone else were no longer to be a town resident, should they continue to serve on the finance committee or be able to serve? The legal answer to that is that residency is not a requirement. My strong feeling is that as a practical matter, everyone expects a member of the finance committee to be a resident voter. And that if that's, if that situation somehow changes during their tenure, that that sort of, that's a game changer. That, that, I think, when, when, whether it's either this board, or the school committee, or all the appointing authorities we have, FinCon members, when you appoint someone, you only do so after you, you know, with the, with the knowledge that they're, that they're a resident, or else they don't get appointed in the first place. But in responding to the requests that had, or the questions that had been raised about it, we did check with town council. Town council finds that it is not a requirement to, under the town code or under the statute, that you, that in order to be on the finance committee, you have to be a resident. Therefore, I would suggest that if you, if you want to change that answer, the way to change it would be to amend the town code and to, and to add it as a, as a requirement. So that's, that explains the draft motion they have there. I think that, I haven't heard anyone who thinks that, you know, that it's, that not, that if someone were not to be a resident, that being on the finance committee... committee is not a problem. And to the extent that if it's thought to be a problem, the fix is to, is to amend the bylaw.
Yeah, I. This is a simple request, too.
I mean, I can tell you personally, I don't let my neighbor do my checkbook. So, you know, if I'm, if I'm responsible for my household finances, I think, you know, as in the town, the finance committee is responsible to make recommendations to this board, but, you know, I would hope that every, every member on that committee would live in town, so. I see the chair.
I'd offer that, it's this much broader than the finance committee. It's town-wide. And I recall we had this discussion with the PMBC, and we had to, according to the MS, MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, where we had to add the superintendent and some other people to the building committee. We did the Russell Street renovation because of the legislation that went through subsequent to building of the middle school. And that is, we had voting members who were not town members, Diane Bema specifically as the superintendent, but MSBA required us to have her on their superintendent position. And we had a lengthy discussion about a non-town resident determining the expenditure of town monies. So now, if there's some things in statute that require us to do that, in that instance there, that obviously it overwrites what we may want to do.
And we had addressed that subsequently with the PMBC itself. And that is frankly one of the, and we amended the town code for the, for the permanent municipal building committee a year or so ago, and expressly added the requirement that they, that PMBC members be voters.
So not knee-jerk, but certainly first blush. That is, if you're going to serve on one of our town committees, with absent very good reason, you should be a town resident.
Yeah, we had the issue of resident or voter, and, and.
Play with that.
That had come up, you're a resident and/or voter. The, the issue has taken different forms in the past. At one point, we had the much-beloved Ian Gunn, who was on the Conservation Commission for many years, not a citizen, not a voter, but a resident. So he, and he served on the Conservation Commission for, for years. He was from the UK and had his citizenship there. But he lived, he, you know, he was one of us, he was here. And so that didn't, that didn't become an issue. If there, if you wanted to look at the requirement of, of, you know, voter or, you know, resident status for town boards, I mean, we could, we could craft a bylaw along those lines, too, if that.
I think in a, in a position of this nature, you know, resident, voter, you know, as respective, you know, we want, we want you, we want you on the finance committee, especially if this board's appointing, to be well-grounded and planted into this town, because, you know, the decisions that are made on that committee are very important to every townsman.
So do we want to go through this tonight for this one, one committee?
I would say. I have no problem doing it, I mean.
If you ask the chair of the, the finance committee, would you have any objections if we, just tonight, we took, made a motion that anyone on your committee would have to be a resident of the town, would you have any objection to that?
I do not. Anybody else have some other numbers here, too? I think it's a good idea.
We're not posting, so we can speak as individuals, but.
Yeah.
Nobody is going to argue with that. I think it's off the face that it makes sense. But Chris was a resident when he was appointed. Is he not a resident now? Does he say he's a resident, and somebody else says he isn't?
We have a letter that, that he sent to both Keith and Barney, that we can tell you that he says that at this point, he is still a resident of the town. And why his name shows up has to do with family matters, and I don't want to get into that, but it shows up at different places as being in Groton, but he's actually a resident of Littleton. That's what he has in the letter. We haven't had a chance to speak to him directly. I haven't.
Yeah, that's, his residency notwithstanding.
Yeah.
This is a valid motion.
Right.
And I would say separate the two, and proceed on this.
I wouldn't argue with that, I just.
Yeah, we got an unfortunate.
Since I had the floor, I asked a question.
Yeah, when there, when there was an initial indication that, well, we didn't know what the answer was, whether he was a resident, whether he was a voter or whatnot. And that ends up being, you know, something the town clerk deals with as a matter of finding a fact. And, and the question that was posed, though, was, well, even if he's not a resident, does that, does that make him ineligible from serving on the FinCon? And the answer that came back of, no, it doesn't, was the wrong answer. That, so we, so if we want to change the answer, that if you, if someone is no longer a resident, cannot be on the finance committee, we have to change the answer by amending the bylaw.
So entertain a motion.
Move Board of Selectmen vote to its intent to submit an article onto the next special town meeting warrant to amend town code section thirteen dash three to add to the eligibility requirement to members of the FinCon to include local residency.
Second?
Move in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I would, Mr. Chair, I think we should still at least have Chris come in and talk to us.
Yeah, great.
At another meeting, you know, I know he's busy right now, but.
And may I ask a question tangential to this, as we've gone through the discovery process, Keith? Do we not also find that the Board of Selectmen, as far as, should they decide someone is no longer to be a member of an appointed committee that this board appoints, what was the process for asking that person not to be on the committee anymore?
Well, the, there is, there is an imperfect system of removing someone from office for once during their appointment. The only tried and tested way of successfully removing them is to, is to get someone to resign, which is usually, so, so if, if, if the appointing authority found there was a situation where their appointee to a town board ought not to continue to serve during their term, the, the most expeditious route is to ask for and receive a resignation. The law is less clear, and I've had some unfortunate experiences where boards I've worked for have been unable to convince a judge to let, to uphold terminating someone's board service.
Really?
Truly coincidental, it involved a FinCon some years back, from the school committee, a school committee appointee to the FinCon, who for reasons just could not make meetings anymore, and it became prolonged after some time. And repeated requests for that resignation eventually tendered, but the, the school committee appointment of two people had only one for some, effectively only one representative for some period of time. The school committee would have liked to have had a remedy for that, and as Keith just explained, we truly did not, other than asking the person's resignation. And as I said, eventually tenured, or tendered, excuse me, but it would have rather been sooner.
So is that under statute, or is it a bylaw? Is that what you're saying when you had the boards go before a judge, it's a statute?
Well, it was, it was actually language in the town charter, that a judge said, even though, even though the language in the charter spoke of how you remove someone from office, selectmen pursued that procedure, and the judge wouldn't allow it.
Really?
So nothing's certain. So that's why I say the most, the certain way to get someone off the board is to get their resignation, so. And when we've had issues come up, we've, you know, that, that is a test, tried and tested.
All right.
Moving on, five A, two thousand fourteen year-end transfer reserve fund, Bonnie.
Yes, I am seriously trying to, in the course of this little year I have until tomorrow, essentially, to get all of the fiscal fourteen bills through and pass them. And as a result of that, you know, we always have some year-end cleanup that we need to do with the accounts. And tonight, what I'm looking for is two different types of transfers. The first that I'll go through are interdepartmental transfers. It's not a reserve fund transfer request. This is allowed in the last two months of the fiscal year, yeah, the last two months of the fiscal year and the first fifteen days of the following. And it's just for smaller transfers, anything, not more than three percent of the total operating budget in that given department. So tonight, I just have a few for that. The first one is for the gasoline account. We're short about five thousand dollars in that account. We did add some additional van service for the council on aging last year. I have adjusted the budget in fiscal fifteen, so we shouldn't have this problem again. But we need to transfer in five thousand to cover that deficit. Fire department has kind of a unique issue in that they need to transfer some funding that was budgeted in their wage line to their expense line. And this is for contractual payments like uniform allowance, cell phone reimbursement. In the past, a lot of the, the times that they would request their reimbursements directly, rather than as expense reimbursements, they would have it paid directly to salary. And we've been migrating these departments to really using them as expenses, and submitting receipts and getting paid, you know, paid for that back. And Chief Wodzinski's had a lot of success in, in doing that. But as a result, we need to transfer money that he had budgeted up in wages down to expenses to accommodate that. So no change to his operating budget at all. In the general insurance budget, I have a small surplus, about five thousand dollars, because our claims experience was better than last year. So I'll use that to offset the gasoline increase. And that's it for the, the interdepartmental transfers. This does require a vote of both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, so I'll be going through this with Marla. And segueing into the reserve fund transfer requests. These items would not be allowed under the previous method, because they're, they're too large, based on the budget that they have appropriated. What I'm looking for tonight is the Board of Selectmen to support two of the reserve fund transfer requests that I'll be presenting tomorrow night. The first one is for legal expense in the amount of fifty-four thousand, and the second is for wastewater and stormwater expense in the amount of twelve thousand. Just to go through the, the legal expense, the current budget is two hundred and ten thousand dollars for legal. So with this transfer, it would bring the, the total budget up to two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And just to show you what, you know, what we spent last year comparatively speaking, it was two hundred and eighty-three thousand, so it's below last year's expenditures. We did have a lot of labor expense last year, because we had all the contracts kind of being wrapped up and everything, so. Mieres and Harrington did provide a summary of their general counsel expenses that I did include with this. But I've also given you a breakout of general counsel, labor counsel, human resource counsel, and tax title and ATV cases, because we use different firms for each. The second one is for wastewater and stormwater expenses. We're looking to have additional funding in the amount of thirteen thousand. The current budget is sixty-five thousand, so with this transfer, the total budget would be seventy-eight thousand. By way of comparison, last year, we spent just shy of seventy thousand. We did have some testing that needed to be done that DEP mandated, so if we, and the way that they work is if you don't do it, they're going to do it for you, and then they're going to fine you in the amount that it costs them to do it. So it's, you pay one way or the other. And this, this account does cover the expenses also at the wastewater treatment facility at the high school.
Who would be responsible for that? Is that to Light and Water?
Light and Water manages the, the program for us, but it's our expense to bear. So they, it's nice to have the arrangement in that they know what they're doing more than we do. And that's it for that.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection thirty-three B, to approve year-end transfers between various line items of fiscal year twenty fourteen totaling twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars, subject to further approval of the Finance Committee. And second, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to request that the Finance Committee approve fiscal year twenty fourteen reserve fund transfers in the amount of fifty-four thousand for legal services and twelve thousand for wastewater, stormwater expenses.
Second.
Let's move in second, and all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thanks, Bonnie.
Is that bugger right over there?
He came back to life, we killed him once. Bugger. Oh, God.
The next item I have is an update for fiscal two thousand and fifteen, and just a quick view of the two thousand and sixteen prognosis as it is today. You might remember that we left the annual town meeting with a overall budget deficit that stood at about ninety-five thousand dollars, or point oh three percent of the operating budget. I am happy to state that that deficit has been closed as of today. We did receive our final charity sheets, you know, over the last twenty-four hours. And we've been able to close that through a combination of state aid and local receipts. In looking at where the state aid actually ended up being, we ended up picking up about seventy-two thousand dollars, about sixteen thousand from net school state aid, which is chapter seventy-eight minus the educational assessments, and about fifty-six thousand in town state aid, which is general municipal aid minus the town assessments. So that, that closed most of the, the gap. And then, while we haven't officially closed everything for fourteen, I am confident that the local excise receipts have also outpaced the projections, so I can close the additional twenty-three thousand by way of excise, excise receipts. So then I took a, a look forward, I rolled this information into the, the master document. We have a ten-year plan pretty much going out, and updated all of the accounts. So for fiscal sixteen, I took a stab at, you know, where it looks like we're going to land, and I'll give you the, the estimates that I'm using. But we're looking at a deficit starting, it's a modest deficit, it's about four hundred thousand dollars, which is, you know, nobody likes to see a deficit, but I've seen starting deficits worse than this. What we're looking at is a one percent increase in local receipts, which would include excise, departmental fees. We are level funding school state aid and town state aid, based on the levels that we receive now in fiscal fifteen. I have new growth estimated at seven hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal sixteen, five hundred thousand for seventeen, and two hundred thousand in the years eighteen through twenty, based on the projects that are in the pipeline, like Sand Parks Development and fifteen Gray Road Housing. On the expense side, I did a couple of different things. We have a three and a quarter percent growth in town department budgets, which is made up by the inclusion of the steps due with no COLAs at this point. And I would remind the board that the collective bargaining agreements expire at the end of this fiscal year, fiscal fifteen. We have a thirty thousand dollar increase in the veteran's benefit expense because of increased claims. He's got increased caseload, and we need to adjust the budget accordingly. And I did put in a program, a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in legal expense to bring the line item more close to what the actual expenditures truly are. If I had backed those out, then the town department budget growth would have been just about two and a half percent. We've also programmed a three percent growth in the school appropriation for fifteen, I mean, for sixteen, which is a half a million dollar increase over what was appropriated in this fiscal year. We have about an eleven and a half percent growth in fringe or employee benefit costs. We're not sure where the premiums are going to end up next year, but, you know, typically somewhere between ten and fifteen percent is, is what's recommended to be forecasted. And there is a reduction in debt service, which was by policy shifted to the capital or one-time expenditures. We don't let declining debt service go into the operating budget. We use it for capital or other one-type expenditure, one-time expenditures. So using those assumptions, the deficit starts in sixteen at three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, but it continues through fiscal twenty at just about three million dollars. So bridging the gap, again, you've got to increase revenues or decrease your expenses one way or the other. But we will continue to monitor them, and, and they are very conservative estimates at this point, so.
So, quick question on your legal expenses. You know, we get the contracts coming due the end of fiscal year fifteen, six thirty, fifteen. Yeah, you had mentioned we spent two eighty-five for, when we did the last go-around for, no, three years ago, so. Last year was two eighty-five. You think twenty-five is going to be enough?
No, we're just trying to get closer to the actual number. We've had it, we've had it appropriated, I think, at a hundred thousand, maybe three, three or four years ago. So we've been doing reserve fund transfers every year, and we're trying to address it by actually budgeting what the expense really is, except we're taking steps towards it rather than throwing it all in at one last time. But we've, we've spent, I think in the last, I think the year before last, we spent two sixty, so it's. So it's $260, $280.
That's a lot of money.
If I may just throw a marker down, and I'm not asking for discussion this evening on it, but you know how recently we complete the school departments collective bargaining agreement through interest-based bargaining? I'd ask that we think about that and speak to our department heads as we go forward on this process before we get too far down the road. It did save us substantially, it worked, so that's what's important. And it saved us substantially on legal fees. So at least a consideration as we go forward.
It's essentially what we did last time, too, right?
With, yeah, for the-
But with the highway.
Well, for the, yeah, but for the highway, the collective bargaining that we did for the other three unions, there was almost no involvement of council until we reached the business terms and then wrote up the agreement.
Yeah, and I think the, you know, we finally have a codified document, too, that the town had never had for years in all our unions, so that was a pretty hefty expense to get those codified, too, so.
We won't have to do that this year. But we will be scheduling executive session time on strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that will be by the fall because we'll be starting negotiations, need to start negotiations with the unions by the fall.
So, a lot of work to do. And the last thing I have-
Just a quick last document. The Finance Committee has not provided with that, so if we could please get a copy of that, that would be helpful. And with reference to the legal reserve fund transfer that we're scheduled to vote on tomorrow night, we had requested, we're expecting a narrative memo, as is customary, explaining where those costs were currently. We have not yet got that, so perhaps the invoices can be brought tomorrow or something. But just to do our fiduciary role, I think it's always appropriate we have something in the-
What breakdowns you have here?
I emailed the breakdown that you have.
Line item to the dollar amount.
Right. All right. 5B, two fiscal update.
This is just a request where we're just now starting the, well, and I feel it's really early, just now starting the fiscal 2016 budget cycle. And we know that, you know, there are going to be challenges, there are every year, particularly as it revolves around capital, that we could have the Board of Selectmen support requesting that the Finance Committee reconvene the Financial Policy Subcommittee group to look at the town's financial policies. It is in the policies that we review them every year, so it's timely to do it now. And I just put a couple of points here that maybe the committee could look at addressing based on some conversations that have been had in the past, but the funding of excluded debt, funding and use of the capital stabilization fund, use of unallocated cell tower funds, incorporating the Community Preservation Act funds into the town's long and short-term financial planning, and then looking at maximizing or addressing maximizing the local base for CPA matching funds, state matching funds. And I think it would be important to have those conversations before coming forward with any, you know, comprehensive fiscal plans on any of the large, you know, projects coming up. And I just didn't know if the board thought that these items would be something useful to be looked at.
But the intention is to reconvene that policy subcommittee?
Yeah, and the committee may have other items that everyone said.
Right.
Talk about these or some, and at least a review at the staff level of things that were on our list of things to do, where to look at, so.
Sure, I mean, during, being on that group, you know, we systematically, you know, it's a big undertaking and there's a lot to do, but we actually welcome suggestions like this and, you know, take a look at it for sure.
Really, this evening we established it already exists.
Yes, it does already exist. I think Bonnie's just making us some recommendations.
Well, no, no, I'm seeing the separation issues. One is whether or not it's a committee that needs to be reconvened, so to speak, or, you know, reestablished, that exists, it's just that a schedule now gets posted.
Right.
And I guess now you and I are on it.
Correct.
So, so working with the FinCom, I think we can accomplish that and come forward with a schedule. And then as far as items, yes, certainly, any items that the Finance Team thinks appropriate, certainly, you know, items for discussion. And then I think we may think of in addition or other FinCom things additionally.
And we will, Bonnie, we have a seat for two.
And Mike Fontenella, as your head of all, is our-
And just as a reminder, we had a reminder even earlier today about the importance of policies that we had, yet another phone call with Standard and Pors. We're doing some borrowing for water, for the water project soon, we'll bring that to a future meeting. But before it goes out to bond issue, we have one of our conference call discussions with the Bond Reading Agency and had one today, and, you know, they were very helpful in identifying or just underscoring for us that there's a very short number of reasons why we're AAA. And the overall condition of the economy, for which we can try to take credit, but that's a key factor, the amount of reserves that we have in our fund balances is another. And the policies that are in place and that are, you know, not only are they in writing, but they are adhered to, those are just, that's what separates AAA communities from ones that aren't. And, you know, so the way we've been operating here and will continue to operate are, you know, being recognized, so it's important stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anything of great administrative importance? We used the term working group earlier this evening, I believe, and we use in subcommittee here. So I suppose we just want to come to a common understanding as to what the correct terminology is.
You know, let the committee-
Yeah, I mean, we've been posting meetings as a working group.
As a working group, yeah. Emphasis on working.
Can we ask the FinCom to take the lead on coordinating a schedule for us to get together? Is that fair enough?
They're meeting tomorrow, right? Oh, it's not on your agenda?
It's not on our agenda, yeah, yeah.
What I'd ask is that the FinCom take down the task of coordinating with the other three members, Jim, myself, and Mike, for our meeting schedule. Is that okay, Jim?
Yeah, that's fine.
So it obviates the need for a motion?
Do we need a motion on this? We accept it?
Keith, do you think we need a motion on this?
If, I think, I think we're doing it. I mean, the record will reveal that, you know, that-
We'll have an agreement to meet again.
What's the policy on that, anyway?
What's the policy?
How about you draft one first?
But I will say, this is the case where it's that we came to this board first with our list of things before we went to another board. And so if that may perturb the other board, but if the opposite is when I go to the other board first, like I did with the planning board.
So a smiley face.
So we'll do it, we'll do it whatever way you want, so.
It's all good. Our board.
So we're all set with 5B? 7A, we've been postponed, and that was the fire station update, death of our fire chief's father.
Yeah, and 7D also. Yeah, we have two requests, or we have two agenda items from the fire chief, and Scott's dad passed away every weekend, and he is in Florida, and we'll, so we'll reschedule those matters for discussion.
So, I mean, we know that Steele has taken the job over in Groton as fire chief.
Yeah.
Do we really need to have the fire chief here? I mean, we know that the salary is going to be supported by existing funding. I would like to say, you know, why are we holding up a vacancy review because of a tragedy in the chief's family? I'd like to recommend that we move forward with the vacancy review.
I recommend to Keith that we, through the request from Mr. McCurdy, who's not here, if he could be present to ask questions.
Oh, okay, all right. All right.
And so, and so I told Steele that we were not going to have it on the agenda.
I got you. Steele's not here, so. Okay. That I did not know. My fault.
Still free call today.
So, what do you say, I mean, because of the importance of that position, we make that a quick agenda item next Monday? We're meeting anyways.
Sure. Yeah, we could put the staffing vacancy review on, we could have that as the first item.
Yeah. They go pretty quick. The money's there already, so we get the input of the chief, and Mr. McCurdy can ask his question.
8A, agree with the town rules in town of Boxborough doing animal control services. This would be an employee of the town of Boxborough.
Employee of the town of Boxborough. We've been dealing with Westford for a long time, provision of services, but Boxborough made us a better deal. And so we'd like to, we'd like to go with Boxborough at a cost of $1,000 a month. The chief can get into the specifics. Let me just say first, the motion is a little cumbersome because in our revolving fund to pay for dog by law enforcement stuff, we have a limit because we put it in there, $5,000 a year. We need to increase that to $12,000 in order to pay for this. We can do that in November at special town meeting. So we're proposing a two-step process. Vote for $5,000 now, that is by us five months, we know November. We will amend the revolving fund from 5 to 12 at that time, and then we will, and that will give us the authority to pay for the remaining seven months.
And that revolving fund is from any licenses, dog license?
Dog license fees.
And it generates just shy of $13,000 annually, so it will fund it, and our feeling is that having the enforcement now stepped up will probably generate more revenue and better licensing.
Chief, anything?
Just a quick little background, we were dealing with Westford for a long period of time, and on a per diem basis, we've been dealing with the Boxborough animal control officer. When this proposal originally came forward from the Boxborough police chief, obviously we were entertaining because we knew we had a problem with animal control. Was a resident from town who was also interested, however, cost-wise, where we don't have kenneling facilities, where we don't have really any of the infrastructure at this point, this was the most cost-effective process for the town to go through. Kenneling will be held in Boxborough, all the fees, all the fines, everything still come back to Littleton, anything that the animal control does. However, it makes it much cleaner because any bills or anything that we have to deal with come from the town of Boxborough, doesn't come from this per diem person that we have been using for a number of years now. And what it does is it gives us seven day a week, six to six, regular animal control, and then six P to six A, it's really on an on-call basis, also again, seven days a week. And obviously, six to six, I told them I would control the, you know, call-outs, the PD will still continue to respond and do our first blanch, if you will, at the, what's going on. And if it's something that's appropriate, that the animal control would come out after hours, we're obviously, you know, responsible, bearing the brunt of that, that cost on overtime. But the six to six, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM is regular patrol time. If they don't happen to be in Littleton, they're in Boxer, and we call them over, doesn't cost us any difference, that's built into the system. This was just a, you know, by state law, we're required to have animal control, and it's no longer just the dog officer, it's the ever-encompassing, you know, wildlife is, you know, recreating itself in our area, so that's our recommendation at this point.
Do you think the motion? Any additions?
No, no, it makes perfect sense, in fact, it gets into that cost-sharing across towns.
Exactly. That's the other thing we were, this was, I know, I think Mr. Bergman's pursuing a couple other options with Boxborough also for cost-sharing, so again, it, and we may bring another town involved next year, but it's just us and Boxborough for this year as a trial basis.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, subsection 4A, to authorize execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Boxborough for the provision by Boxborough of animal control officer services for Littleton at a cost of $1,000 per month, with the term through November 30th, 2014, which may be extended through June 30th, 2015, and further to state its intent to insert an article onto the four, 2000, I mean, followed 2014 special town meeting warrant to increase the dog bylaw enforcement revolving fund amount from $5,000 to $12,000.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
8D, we already took care of.
Yeah.
That's already scheduled. 8C, rules and regulations, since we're dealing with goals and right after, at the same time doing the master plan, I would suggest we hold off on this until we get through those two mages.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we were going to, the goals are due on the 21st, we'll do the master plan update at maybe the 28th, and you could get to this whenever you can.
Whenever we can, yes.
Yeah. And how does this work? I haven't seen this one in action yet, so we've got 200 pages. Do we sit there and go through every one, or?
The other way that the board has done it in the past is to identify if there are particular sections or chapters or policies that you want to spend quality time on, just identify those. I think we went through three or four specific chapters. We didn't go through all, you know, 200 pages, maybe we, you know, in all, there might have been a dozen pages that we spent quality time on. So if there are topics that look of interest, you could, you could call those out and we'll schedule those topics for discussion. But what we did do, because one of the things that we discussed last year was the administrative provisions or procedures chapter was essentially updated to say that each, recognize that each new board gets to adopt its own policies. And one way to do that is to sort of take a look at what exists from years past and have the sitting board, you know, sort of vote to accept those as your policies for the new board, or at least review them. And as a practical matter, until the selectmen's policies get changed, we tend to, it's not stare at decisis like a, you know, a court decision or anything, but we tend to rely on the existing written policies that a board adopted in the past until the sitting board amends it. We go by the old procedure until the sitting board amends it, rightly or wrongly.
It's a great reading.
Oh, yeah. I've already gotten through my 200.
If you turn a correlation on some of the policies that the selectmen have and how they relate to state law and federal law, the background of my question is, school community ethic, it was close to 300 policies, I forget the exact number now, and a great number of them in accordance with law when you really get down with them. And some of them, we ended up just getting rid of because it came policy, we follow the law.
Yeah, we have not done that with selectmen's policies. We've done it exhaustively with personnel policies, though, that our Human Resources Council, Jack Dolan, has spent an enormous amount of time over the last couple of years going through either-
Cleaning up?
Yeah, the personnel policies, in some cases, the bylaw language, and, but we have not done that with selectmen's policies.
They're not an overnight process, for sure.
But that could be a goal, you know, set aside so many per year, maybe, not the whole thing.
Yeah.
You know? One or two.
Okay, so we'll schedule that at a later date.
Please.
You had originally, it was originally scheduled to be tonight, and when I saw tonight's agenda, I knew you did not want to go at times, so.
No, 8D, before we get into it, because I know you went to a meeting, Keith, but the Kinder Morgan Tennessee gas pipeline, I think a lot of us were all along where it was going, but kept a distance from it because it actually wasn't going through the town of Littleton. And one day last week, I received an email and talked to Keith about it. In the meantime, I had talked to Representative Osiero and State Senator Jamie Eldridge, only to find out when I talked to them that they had not heard about any proposed changes at all. They hadn't been notified by Representative Sheila Harrington that she had caucused other representatives in certain towns and actually made a statement about the possibility of moving that pipeline along Route 2 and 495. I think we all object to that, the idea that something's coming through our town and she didn't either involve Jim or Jamie. Jamie was going to make a phone call that afternoon, I haven't heard back yet on what that phone call was, but the phone call was going directly to Representative Harrington to find out why a caucus would be called without involving the towns that now they want to affect. And there's been a lot of history that's come out since then, too, that, and one of the comments made by- the comments made by someone up in that subcommittee, you can talk about it later on, but the meeting before, I guess, I think it was Representative for Towns and actually said that, I don't know how she worded it, but to take the burden that we have and just throw it into another town is not the.
Yes, she felt bad for her neighbor.
Yeah. So I was encouraged, at least someone's taken some rational decision of thoughts, rather. But you were actually able to attend the meeting today.
Yeah, I got myself invited to the meeting of the, it's, they're now calling themselves, hold on. Let me find it here. The Northern Massachusetts Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition. And that is the, the name that the municipalities that are, are in our immediate area who, who met. These communities though, and I have to say, Littleton has not received a notice from Kinder Morgan or anyone that we are officially a part of anyone's proposal. But there are a number of communities that have, all the way from the New York border, you know, all the way east to Drakeett, along the northern tier of the Massachusetts border. Number of communities, including going from, from east to west, Drakeett, Tingsboro, Dunstable, Groton, Pepperell, Townsend, Ashby and Ashburnham. That's just in the so-called Northern Massachusetts tier. There are many other communities in central and western Massachusetts who also got the notice from Kinder Morgan that they are, that those towns are being eyed as the route for this Tennessee gas pipeline extension. The meeting that, that I attended this morning was mostly an organizational one and I have to say that I didn't, I didn't see any of the, of the attitude of, of let's hoist our problem onto someone else's community. And so that, that was, that was good. I, they, they have not officially extended the scope of who, who can be a coalition member to include those who haven't gotten a notice from Kinder Morgan. I think we'll get to have that discussion at future meetings. But the idea is that, that there are, or rather, the mission for this group is to, in their words, to gather knowledge and work collaboratively as a coalition of municipalities to provide representation and information to relevant government and public bodies concerning the proposed Tennessee gas pipeline project proposed by Kinder Morgan and its effect on our communities. And they've identified the considerations that they have and want to look, talk about to validate the need for additional energy, particularly in northeast region of New England, investigate alternatives which would include alternative energy sources, conservation members and alternative routes. That will, that topic is of great interest to us. Identify impacts to the public, economic, environmental, quality of life, safety, and provide information relative to the, to the permitting and pre-permitting processes. So it's mostly at this point a conduit for information. There was a real debate about whether they should be any conduit for collective action. Some of the communities represented have either through their boards of selectmen or even their town meeting, some have voted to oppose the project outright. Others have reserved judgment on the project and have not taken a position on it. From conversations or from information available from state government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts has not taken a position on this particular project. The context within which it's being made however, is that our governor and the other New England governors have said, we need to have more energy in, in the winter to deal with, you know, to deal with the home heating season. And that it needs to be low cost, low cost for our users. So you put some of the pieces together and you can see, well, you know, compared to many other things, gas is, is certainly more economical. There are others though who are, who are proposing the, the project simply because it's fracked gas, simply because it's methane and it's of the sort that's particularly injurious to the environment, especially if it is, is released into the atmosphere. The process by which this thing goes through will be long and exhaustive and is, and the outcome is very likely years away. The, it would be a permit that's issued by the federal government, the federal, it's F E R C, Federal Energy Regulatory Committee, I think. And the governor has written to the, the director of that agency to ask that whatever process they go through would be as open and inclusive as possible. It will be, you know, for such projects, there would be massive amounts of environmental studies and, and all sorts of impact studies. And to, from that standpoint, I don't think Littleton is in any unique position, any more so or less so than any other community that might be affected either directly if it comes through our town or indirectly if it's, if it's nearby. So I think there's strength, from our standpoint, there's strength in numbers if we can be working with a coalition of, of either neighboring communities or regional planning agencies or state government or other to make sure that we know what, what the project entails and can see that, that someone is spending some quality time and money on looking what the impacts are. So, so those things are, are in the future. There is not a proposal though officially for a, a pipeline to go through Littleton. There is the discussion, as the chair said, and we all read about it in the, in the paper because we didn't, we weren't contacted directly, that at least one group of legislators from affected communities appears to be discussing or, or pursuing the idea of having the, the route change from mostly rural communities, not built up areas, conservation land in some cases, to, to public, you know, state highways or. I shared with the board some of the, some of the things that have been available in the newspaper. There, there've been conflicting feedback, even from the Kinder Morgan representative about what, whether the idea of diverting the route to state highways or interstates even makes sense. They're not keen on it, where, where Kinder Morgan is not keen on it, where there would be major population centers or it would be difficult to access the, the pipe on, you know, a divided highway or something. So there may be good reasons why, why it shouldn't get diverted. The other side of the concern about location is that, is that there, many of the properties that are, that are eye, being eyed for this, the route are conservation properties. And under Massachusetts law, takes two-thirds vote of the House and Senate, of the state senate and state house of representatives to change the use of conservation property to something else, under our state Article 97. Well, federal government does not have to comply with Article 97. And so that is a, that while for any permit the state might issue, Article 97 is a, is a roadblock that has to be dealt with. Yep, you'd have to get your votes of the legislature to allow those conservation properties to be used for another purpose. Those are not the rules for where a federal permit is issued. For that reason, I think that because, that I've, I've seen online that there are conservation groups, something called a Mass Land Collaborative, were actually advocating that their members contact legislators to, to support the idea of diverting the route to state highways. Why? Because I think they, they may realize if the project goes forward, if the feds ultimately approve the project, it goes where the feds say. And if you can't use Chat, Article 97 as, as a means to stop it, and therefore if the project ultimately, if the feds say it goes forward, if you can't stop it, then I, I think what some of the groups are realizing that if, if you can't stop it, then you, then you better get it moved, you better get the, the route moved. And I think that that's where we're going to have to pay very, very close attention to what, if that kind of, if that happens, Littleton and other communities along the highway are going to have to pay very, very special attention to that. So it's, so I appreciate folks. I, I got a number of emails when I was on vacation last week or so. It's very helpful. I was able to get myself invited to the meetings. The next one is next Monday morning in Tingsboro. So it, we're, it's on the radar screen and we'll continue to monitor it. And no one can find, we've been unable to find the letter that was being allegedly being circulated by the state rep from Groton. Our legislators were not able to find that from our conversations I've had with them. And.
I think that's an important piece is to make sure that Jamie and Jim stay on top of this and to make sure that if there was a group of legislators out there meeting, that they're involved and they stay involved and stay engaged. So I think that's a message this board should send either through the chair or noting that, that, you know, we want you engaged.
I think, yeah. I have no problem doing it and they, to be quite honest, Senator Eldridge was quite upset that he knew nothing about it and wasn't involved in any of those discussions. So, and fairness to those two, that day, well, that was like three days ago, he hasn't got back to me yet, but I'll contact him again. Keith will.
Yeah, I saw Jim Osiero at Savis' time on Saturday night and said we will, we will catch up on that topic, so.
Melissa, anything?
No, just a second, as you guys said.
Is it on the radar scope for Westford and Chelmsford, since we're talking about 495?
I've not seen anything from Westford and there were, there was a, there was someone from Chelmsford who was at the meeting today, I don't know. In some cases, there, it doesn't stop in Drakeett, by the way, that the project, that the pipeline that's being proposed will go as far as Drakeett. That is from Western Mass to, to Drakeett. But there are feeder lines from, from Drakeett. And so a number of other communities, Wilmington and over, there are a number of other towns further east of us that are concerned. One of the suggestions that I made at the meeting today where, where the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments was, was there, Beverly Woods, who's the head of that regional planning agency was there. Some of the, those towns are represented by NEMCOG. The rest are represented by Monmouth Tussit Regional Planning Authority, which was not there. So I encouraged them to, to include Monmouth Tussit and I said, I will contact MAPC because we are, because not only Littleton and if it's, you know, if Acton and, and, and Boxborough and others along Route 2 are impacted, MAPC represents our interests. And really the key is that all of these towns, there's, again, there's nothing unique about the impacts that it could be in a town and that we need to have support from whatever entities can help us, our regional planning agencies, the, you know, state agencies, whatever, to have more, to be able to provide us with more information.
Do you think the Commonwealth will ever come to a position as a whole or are we all going to be?
The governor will, we're, we're told that the governor will wait for a formal filing of an application before the Commonwealth adopts a position.
It's gone in November, so.
And he's got, you know, and, well, right. And, and the next question was, all right, well, how do the gubernatorial candidates feel?
It's good to know where the battlefield is, the direct forces.
Any other comments?
I think what Keith's doing is great. He's already engaged, keeping that way going. You've engaged with both the reps, the state senator and the, our state representative also. You know, the discussion about whether you send a letter or not. I mean, it's almost beating up on them. I think they're aware of it, they're working it.
We'll continue to work for them.
I mean, I'd support a lot if you want to do that, but.
No, I don't think it's necessary. Anyone have any comments?
So I just wanted to say thank you guys for getting this on. I'm sorry. James McCabe, Nagala Hill Road, also one of the moderators on the residents for better Littleton. I just want to thank you guys for getting this on the agenda so quickly. I'm really psyched that you were able to go to that meeting. That's awesome. I had something that I wrote up to, to read. I'd only be duplicating a lot of the things that, that you've said, so I really appreciate it. One question is, is there anything that the town, townspeople, individuals like myself can be doing at this stage? I think a good suggestion is figuring out where the candidates stand on this, but what else can we be doing as, as residents to stay ahead of this, to be very proactive? I don't want to wait for a proposal.
Are the meetings open, Keith?
They, they are. They're, they're open to the public and I was there, I'm there as a member of the public. I'm not a member of the coalition, but. They're posted public meetings. They will, I, at this point, what we're, I guess what we're trying to do is to compile information and then, and then share information. We, we have not set up a website here. That is one of the things that the coalition will be doing. We can link to, we can link our town website to theirs once they get it established. There's, right now, an awful, an awful lot of information out there. In some cases, you have to search very hard to find. Took, took me, took me a couple of hours to actually find a map to identify, well, which communities is this going through? Because it was a little tiny scale and I needed something large enough scale to actually be able to see where it was.
Isn't that a great link, Keith? Is that in the, will that be in the minutes somewhere? That might be a good link to put in there.
I'll put some, yeah, I'll put some links up tonight with, where I was able to get some of the basic information. But the coalition itself will be, will be putting, will be going live with some, with a web presence very soon.
Ed Mullen, Griss Mill Road. Also thank you guys for taking a lead on this. I've also been recently hired in the town of Drakeett as assistant building inspector. So being employed in that town, I'd like to offer that anything I find out being in Drakeett, I'd love to share with the board or with Keith, so.
Keith, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on then, we have seven minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the most exciting call?
Something we said.
Is this the most exciting moment of the meeting?
Yeah. Well, they want to see the, it's the season finale of 24.
You gonna have a chance to look at the minutes?
Tough competition time.
This Mr. Vello is not part of this.
We got three.
No, looks good to me.
You gotta make a motion.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 23rd, Board of Selectmen.
Second?
Moving in second to approve the minutes of June 23rd, 2014 for the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion or? No, do we, the other minutes that were executive session.
Yeah, we have some executive session minutes that, that are, a question that had come up about the matter was whether, whether the litigation had been, was now finalized. And a month ago, when we had it on the agenda, the indication from our counsel, our special counsel was the matter was not settled and had not been entered in judgment and so on. He's since indicated that it has, it has been concluded, the matter is settled. So there's no further impediment to, for the board to release the minutes. The only question was a request from Selectman McCurdy that you scheduled.
Which I would suggest that we do on Friday.
So we could schedule, yeah, we, they, the minutes were requested under a public records law request. We could not give them out on a timely basis, and we still won't. And we'll do it as soon as we can.
And if the petitioner would, would ask that question, why, we can explain why.
Didn't, we can, yep.
And that's okay. It's, that rules.
Absolutely. All right. Can I make administrative request on minutes? First of all, they're extensive. They're excellent, you know, the amount of information that's put in them. Microsoft Word actually has a process when you're doing draft to number each line. So if a discussion item came up and said, rather going, okay, on the third page, Council on Agents, sixth line down, you go line 156. And make your comment if you want to change anything. It makes it real easy for everybody to reference immediately. Is that fair enough?
Sure. Just like bills in Congress, they do it.
Can you do it, Jen?
Nice little measure.
It's just the press of a button, sure. But no one's ever asked a question about the minutes before.
Make a motion, Jen.
Second.
Moving to second, do adjourned, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Lift the switch.
Yeah, flip the switch.